That's up a tad over the fourth calculation, about ninety-nine thousand. Safe schools. And let me just go back to the, you know, the sparsity piece, you know, they did get the extra funding and they put in the pot and hermanos back in. But remember when we were assessed at a much higher level, our school tax value of twelve billion dollars on this property tax value? We were getting a lot less in sparsity because it threw us into a wealth adjustment. So now, I know our property value has gone down, but it actually has given us more money in the sparsity allocation. So that's one good byproduct for that.
Now, the sparsity, obviously, changes every year. I'm aware of what Hernando County issue was, being on the bubble or not getting it, now they're back in it. But does the small district consortium help that much with the sparsity issue? Because obviously, with us being a more rural county, a smaller county, sparsity does help us tremendously. And if that goes up, that's a benefit to us that other larger counties don't have. So how does the sparsity, what's behind sparsity as far as how that really does change every year?
It's based on the allocated funding that the legislature approves for that line of sparsity. If it's based on your FTE and all that, you get like a certain dollar amount, then they give you money on top of that.
Right, but if the pot of sparsity funds goes up in here, then it's going to benefit all of the small districts.
Correct.
And so that too is just like everything else in state government politics. I mean, that's negotiated with the higher levels, I mean, bargain.
Sure.
So does this small district consortium have an impact, do we know, on sparsity? And on the influence over sparsity?
I think that's for y'all to...
They were pointing to figure.
Have they ever negatively affected it?
In my opinion, yes.
Well, I was just curious, because that was a...
I don't know, Mr. Dodd, if you heard that, that response?
On the negative?
Yeah.
On the negative side?
It's always been a discussion between Mr. Blocker and the Kansas.
So sometimes we get hurt then by sparsity, you're saying, Mr. Denny?
No, no, no.
I mean...
By the small, I believe there was a period of time where we had an issue with the small district consortium and where we needed them to be advocating for us. They'd use that to advocate for the group when we needed, and a very specific issue is Citrus County affected. And we were not, we did not have that voice.
I got you.
And Mr. Blocker can give, I mean, we've talked about it before, he can give more details. Now, I'm encouraged to listen to Ms. Powers. I want Ms. Powers to know that and to hear, but there's, that's been a point of contention with myself is, we lived through a period of time where, through a interpretation of calculations having to do with sparsity.
It was also when we...
I was thinking the point two five. The point two five.
We actually got the law changed after that, but...
But we lost how many thousands of dollars?
Mr. Dodd, there's over thirty years with the small county consortium. So they are the lobbyists for sparsity.
Right.
What impact they have individually with the lobbyists, that's, you know, that's a need or not. I think it was close to thirty-six districts. Yeah, so thirty-six districts.
And the issue becomes is what happens to one, to some extent, happens to all. In our case, it was one that was happening to us. We needed someone to advocate for us, for Citrus County, because we're the only ones that were getting affected by it. But guess who benefited by us not getting that money? The rest of the consortium.
Our wealth adjustment with the point two five was added to the calculation, which was for capital. Capital taxes should not be capitalized in the general fund or in the cockpit for sparsity. At that time, it was because the law did not, you know, exclude it. So we got really reduced on our sparsity. I mean, I think it was five, six, seven hundred thousand dollars, something like that. So we went to the small school to kind of advocate for us. And in the opinion of myself and others is that, you know, if you lobby to get our money back, then you take it wholeheartedly, right? And they're probably in a situation, it's probably tough to do that, because it's going to affect a lot of more districts as opposed to one, so.
It's sort of like we were talking about with the governor, sometimes, you know, there's a line item veto. It will affect that us or, you know, that couple of people, another type of veto, that thirty, forty, thirty, forty, yeah, so it's quite...
Their justification was the budgets that had been sent out, line item dollar amount, and they have helped us, we have to take the money from here. We didn't have a second.
And Kenny said, "Don't take it."
You did, you get the language changed next year.
And they changed the language.
Changed language.
There was intensive discussion and some clarifications, so I'm sorry if that was...
But the consortium didn't change the language.
But the discussion between Kenny and the three of them, to clarify what shouldn't have been done.
Actually, Mr. Bedford, who's spearheaded that for us, who's Mr. Bedford, he's an education consultant in Tallahassee that we get a lot of information from.
Thank you.
So you can see, so this sparsity, the safe schools, it went down about twelve thousand dollars in the final calculation from the final conference report. Unfortunately, those are dollars that we can use. SAI, above five thousand dollars. Interesting, you know, listening to the conversation about the grades and all that is, the lowest performing three hundred school districts in the state has to provide that extra hour budget of service, based on all this stuff that the state has not given. They don't know what schools is are for this coming school year. So fortunately, we're not in that position, we haven't been in that position. But so they're being told, just give it to those same schools, even though they may not be in that situation when they get the grades. So luckily, we're not in that position. The SAI dollars are for what we need it for, so. Reading instruction, down about eight thousand dollars. ESC, down about thirty-six thousand. The Cypress Creek DJ allocations down. Student transportation, up about twenty-six thousand, thankfully, we need that. Instruction materials is up about eleven thousand. But you can see it's about one point one million, it's been pretty consistent, and that's where your dual enrollment textbooks come out of, that same allocation. Those are K-12 textbooks, enrollment textbooks, those are your media supplements, they go into the media center, so that's where it all comes out of. Teacher lead, one of the things we have got to, and it's about the same amount of money, two hundred and forty-three thousand. One of the things that just came out, that we just learned, and we've got to put out some direction, we haven't really got to this point, but I'll let you know because you may hear of this in the coming months, is that we're going to have to collect the receipts from everybody, the teacher who gets this money to be able to account for it. It's IRS rules that came down, that we now have to collect those and maintain those.
We did that in the beginning, initially started.
Used to, years ago, but then we got a rule from DOE, we didn't have to. Now, the IRS has come out and says, no, you do have to collect the receipts.
Back when it was initially implemented, the teachers had to retain the receipts and they were held responsible for retention. Now, does it become the district's responsibility?
Yes, because if we don't have them, then it becomes a taxable income to the teachers.
We talk to principals, and bookkeepers will be given that task to make sure they like them, because if they don't like them from the teacher, then it will be an enticement and taxed.
And taxed.
Okay.
And unfortunate, but I mean, last week, I mean, every school district learned about this at the conference, and nobody was very happy, because this is just an extra burden that was placed on several people within the whole organization to be able to collect, manage, organize, and maintain.
So now, if they purchase items, they pay sales tax, that's not going to become an issue, is it? Or do they purchase through the...
This is income tax.
I know, but this is for supplies, correct?
Correct.
So when a teacher goes out and purchases supplies, and they don't use the district tax exempt number, they're going to pay tax on it? They can still be reimbursed for the taxes they pay, correct?
We give them an allocation of approximately two hundred dollars, what the actual allocation is for that. They have to produce those receipts that shows that they spent the two hundred dollars, where the dollar money is.
But they don't have to use tax exempt status to be reimbursed, correct? And there's an issue with some finance...
They can't use our tax exempt.
Okay, but we can reimburse them for their sales tax.
For the total purchase.
For the total purchase, including their sales tax. I know some other finance areas in government, they won't allow that, but I just want to make sure that's okay.
But this is a income tax issue I'm talking about, who are as audits us, that we will now have to be able to produce those receipts that show that this was an accountable plan for allocation to a teacher for classroom supplies. If they don't have the receipts, or we don't have the receipts, then we can be imposed penalties for payroll taxes.
We can't, as a district, exempt out of it in some way and let that fall to the teacher's obligation.
No, Washington County was audited last year, I guess this is what came about.
And, you know, the tough part is, is that means Tammy's department and the bookkeepers at each school, this is a huge logistical undertaking, and we want it for the teachers. I mean, I can tell you, I remember when Thomasing would keep the receipts versus, you know, just being able to check off on the box on your taxes. This is, I mean, this is a layer of bureaucracy. This is, that's totally what this is. And Mr. Dodd, you're correct, there is taxes paid on addition to that, you know, there's taxes paid on those items.
Can they spend the money going through just a purchase order? Or it has to be spent outside of the purchase order system?
This is where they buy on their own.
And they can't buy on their own through a purchase order? You know how you sit down in the very beginning of the year, the end of the years, and instructor...
Typically, this is, I mean, they get an actual check.
So this really, yeah, it just really covers, I think, the kind of season, and there's no...
And, you know, years ago, I think this line item was put in as like, you know, an extra benefit for the teacher, and no one ever had the thought that this would become taxable income. But unfortunately, now it's happened, well, it's much like you can't get gift cards out because gift cards are considered income, which becomes taxable. The digital classroom, you can see an extra hundred thousand dollars for that allocation issue. So all told, the total FBP funding is about eighty-one million dollars, which is up about one point nine million. So if you go down to, you just skip a lot of the, if you go down to the class size reduction, it's about roughly the same, about ninety-three thousand dollars plus fifteen point two million. And there are lottery school recognition dollars, about five hundred and forty-five thousand, which kind of mimics what we got on the fourth calculation after they made the adjustment. That's where your A-plus money comes in, and if there's any leftovers for your enhancement council. And I don't know if you... So there's about forty-nine thousand left over this year that will go down for the updates. It's not much, but it's something. And of course, that's always, that's always kind of a floating number, because we don't know what the grades will be, so a lot of times, the state will make those adjustments. And what's interesting, you know, in the last, the fourth calculation, we did get an adjustment of about five hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars. So we're hoping that when they went back and did the conference report this year, they took the adjusted FTE numbers, because they did see statewide it was starting to grow. So we're hoping these numbers will not grow again to where they're going to make another prorated adjustment to us in the FBP when it comes back to the third and the fourth calculation. We're hoping that that will take care of it. So if you look at the total state funding, in total, it's about fifty-four million, and then your RLE is going to produce about forty-two point eight million, and then your discretionary is about six point three, six point four million. For total local funding, though, about forty-nine million, compared to fifty-four million state funding, for a total of a hundred and three million dollars, or about two point six million dollars more. So it's about seven thousand twenty-one dollars and fifty-six cents more per student. If you remember, we went through the House, when we did this originally, we used the House's number, they were coming about seven thousand one hundred and ten. So somewhat similar, a little bit less, but somewhat similar. They did reduce funding, remember, because they went through it, based on the Medicaid issue, they had to put money into that funding, so they did reduce some of the education numbers. Mr. Dodd, do you have a question?
Well, the, it's one hundred and sixty-six dollars and seventy-five cents more, correct?
For the fourth calculation.
For the fourth calculation, okay.
I was just saying, according to what the House originally put out, that we ran the first budget numbers.
And so overall, it looks like a little over two point six million dollar increase, correct?
And we ran, we used the House numbers in the first presentation we gave you, it's a little less than that. The total funding for the House was a hundred and three million four hundred and ninety-six. So it's a little bit less, not much. Any questions on the FBP? Now, remember, we'll get a second calculation out in July, about the third week of July. It'll come out right before we got to have everything put together for the newspaper, so everyone's fast and fierce putting it together, so it gets to the newspaper to be able to approve the tentative budget that last Tuesday of the month in July. And that'll be the true numbers as far as the property value. Yes, sir. So the taxable value, you can see, it's kind of hit that belly, we hope. It's happened the last two years, and we're starting to come up a little bit, and we hope that progresses. We would like to get back up. You see the high R mark, the oh-seven, oh-eight year, was about twelve billion, and we're at eight point eight, eight point nine billion. We'll probably never get back up there, based on real estate market will never be that high, I don't believe, and plus, we don't have the value that Duke and UCU play. So those two things will keep us, you know, keep us up. We hope to see moderate increases every year. And you can see the tax budget, how that's kind of went over the last few years. So this year, the RLE is going to produce forty-two point eight million, discretionary six point three, and the capital about twelve point eight million. This just shows you the best of the general fund and the capital. This is where we're at as far as collections to date, as of June fifteenth. We've hit about ninety-six point six three percent of the budget. As you see in the previous years, with the one exception of twelve thirteen, that's when Duke didn't pay anything, or very little. We've always exceeded the budget a little bit, and we always kind of look at that as we kind of know we're probably going to exceed. So this year, we're ninety-six point six three of the budget, and we still get a, we'll get a payment at the end of this month, and we'll get a payment at the end of July, and maybe potentially receivable, you know. So we still have some time to, Dodd, to bring in some of those revenue dollars, those tax collections, where we should be right back in line. So when we look at the fund balances, the total fund balance, here to the unrestricted, you can see the total fund balance is starting to level out, that's good. And then we're starting to look at the unrestricted, starting to grow a little bit, so that's even better. So we're hoping that we can get that, everything back on the swing, going back up north, and start putting money back into the, into the fund balance. As you recall, you know, that's been one of the concerns from, you know, the rating agencies, but the auditors, when our fund balance has started growing, so we've been looking at this and trying to get it back and going north. And you can see this year, the projection this year is pretty much coming pretty close to being balanced, where we should have a small surplus of two, three hundred thousand dollars, and next year's budget should be, we have a balanced budget. So this is what we're looking at. You can see the projection this year is about a hundred and fifteen point five million in revenue, and about one point, one fifteen point two in expenses for a small surplus of about two hundred and seventy-five thousand. And then you'll see reserves down there, five hundred thousand, that's your inventories, we keep in the warehouse, that we haven't expended yet, we purchased them, but we haven't expended them, so they become a reserve. The restricted is the big number, the two point one million. A lot of that is what is happening at WTI, a lot of the workforce dollars or reserves that are particular for that, that school, so they have dollars that they've been carrying over and carrying over, and we'll talk a little bit more about that in a minute.
Where is that on this?
Under your reserves, restricted to two point one million. The majority of that number is workforce dollars, fees, and dollars that come through the state for WTI. And also in that number is comprised of all your categoricals that roll over, your marked dollars for specific expenditures that aren't spent in that year, we have to reserve them, and then we'll budget them back up the following year. And then you're assigned, those are the things that we assign every year, that we want to restrict, it may be band uniforms, school discretionary accounts, things like that, that we, we assign out, but we want to restrict those dollars that go back to those particular expenditures. So those add about two point six, two point seven million, and our undesignated fund balance at year-end, we're estimating about four point five million, about four point one percent of the revenue. So we're starting to grow that back and get back into the, above that three, board policy's three and a half, auditors start looking at those below three.
I want to look at the bottom line there on the undesignated fund balance. The original budget versus the projection, can you just cover that? I'm not, we're talking about fiscal year two thousand and fifteen.
Current one we're in, correct.
The current one we're in. And so the original budget, budget looked at us at four point six million in the undesignated fund balance, but in reality, it looks like it's going to be about four point five million? And so, so our undesignated fund balance actually went down this year, is that correct?
From what the original budget?
What the original?
But not from the previous year?
Okay.
Because if we go back, I'll show you on that previous slide, you can see where it was, the restriction in the total, you can see a little growth there on the unrestricted.
Right.
You're just seeing the current year.
Right. So how much did we, how much, did the fund balance, undesignated fund balance increase though from last year, about?
I don't have that in my museum.
All right. But you're projecting, you're proposing a sixteen, two thousand and sixteen reserve of one point five million that would go into the undesignated fund balance? That's your proposed budget, is that correct?
Reserve do not go into the undesignated fund balance.
Okay. The restricted, that's the restricted from WTC?
For categoricals.
Rough numbers, Kenny, weren't we at three percent or three point five?
We were three point five percent.
We were three point five?
Which is our board policy, right?
Right. I was just going to say, but, so that's the rough, the rough percentage difference. I know that's not the actual number.
Right, okay. And we're going to try to, I mean, there's nothing wrong with us being above three point five, maybe that's what...
Oh, no, we want to be.
That's right.
We always try to make it at least five percent.
Yeah, which I agree with.
If you look, I'm sorry, the beginning fund balance was six point nine million at the year-end, and then we're proposing to grow it to seven point one million. So it's a, it's a small increase.
Okay.
So, but let's talk about those reserves. When we, we'll do the final budget, those reserves will be put into the main budget, because you will budget those numbers out. So when we look at the proposed, we're showing you a balanced budget, because revenues expenditures are equal, and we're carrying over one point five, that's the reserves, and we believe at the year-end, that's what it's going to look like. Now, when we give you the budget, especially in July and September, you'll see those numbers will be put into the main budget, so you'll see a deficit, and you'll say, why are you having a deficit? It's because we're budgeting out all those reserves. We know at year-end, they will not be all expended, it will fall down to your restricted reserve category. We are working with WTI, because that is one of the comments the auditors had for us last year, that we have to start expending those dollars more frequently, more rapidly in the years that they receive them, because they want them spent at that school and those kids in the years that they receive them. Over the years, they get, it's a good problem to have, they get so many dollars, the state workforce dollars, state performance-based incentives, I mean, they get all types of money, they get local fees to be able to provide this, the system, this, this classes for the kids, that sometimes you can't spend it all, so you accumulate dollars, and that's where we have to restrict and reserve every year. The majority of that restricted reserve, that two point one million, is WTI. We are working with them to try to allocate and earmark certain dollars that they will spend. They have done a good job looking at what they can spend some dollars on. And we're actually going to be meeting with them probably this week and/or in the coming weeks, to make sure they understand exactly what they have, what the role is going to be, and what they can expend out of those reserves. So in the future, that number, that reserve, restricted number, is going to start dwindling, because they're going to be expected to start spending some of those dollars, and they'll be carrying over some of them. So that number will start reducing as we go through the years. Because that was one of the criticisms we had from the audit, that we were carrying to new workforce dollars. Not unique, a lot of school districts are in that same boat, so. Any other questions about the, this is real, just real pro forma, we're just going to... So that's the general fund. Like I said, we put that together real quickly, Tammy did put together all those numbers real quick, and we put this together for you. So when we come back in July, we'll try to put a little bit more detail. My goal is not to produce the book in July, or to produce the book in September, if that's okay with y'all, but we'll put some more stuff into this PowerPoint we'll present to you before we approve the tentative budget that night Tuesday, if that's good with y'all.
And we, you'll typically give this to us before the meeting, or send it to us?
Yes.
Okay.
You'll see the advertisements in the paper for the budget Saturday before Tuesday we approve, but yeah, you'll have, you just got it today, because literally, we just finished it this morning about eight or nine.
Right, okay. But we'll have it within, what is it, a couple of weeks before the, a week? Or how much time do we have?
Typically, we try to get it to you the Friday or Tuesday.
But generally, the numbers won't have changed a whole lot.
Like I say, we'll make the adjustments from the FBP when we get that final calc in, second calc, and it'll be changed probably to the required local effort and the property value, and we'll have to make the adjustments. We'll have to go through and make the adjustments, because we did, we did have one twenty-five at the recent science station, we've got to take that out, those are some adjustments that have to be made, but hopefully not too many.
I see Tammy over there going, trying to figure that through, but she...
We try to stay on top of it, we go through this, so we get to this point, there's not a lot of differences that you have to see. So the capital budget, I know last time, we had some discussion about the capital budget, so we wanted to go through and give you the updated numbers from what we see. We have adjusted for the property value, so we can see what the one point five will generate. The only thing that I don't know, and we're, we're still hedging and speculating on the PICO, I have not seen the final PICO number, so that could possibly change by the time we come to the July meeting. Those were, those are numbers that the UE gave us, and they're out years, but we don't know if that's going to be the actual number for this year and beyond, so we're still waiting on the PICO. I know that was a bone of contention, as to whether they wanted to bond and bring in more money, or not bond and cut, reduce money, so we don't know at the final, I can't remember. So here's the expenditures. Everything is basically the same, we did add in, if you look at, on the technology, you can see that line item is a lot bigger, because we did put back in the staff computers, we added an allocation of two million dollars. I think it was one point nine, a change, we rounded it to two million. So that is back in there, as previously approved. And then the county radio upgrade, about three hundred thousand, that is coming to reality. I know Mr. Bradshaw has the agreement, he's been reviewing with the county over that. We could do one of two things. We can pay it all in one fee, about three hundred thousand, or we can spread it out over ten years. Me personally, I'd rather just pay it one time and be done with it, and not incur any additional expenses for that. But that's the way they got the agreement written, it's either way, so we can, I would rather just put it in here and be done. You got the pool that we've got in there, site security upgrades, the bus lifts, that's what we talked about before, Maryland was saying they needed two lifts in Irwinus Two and Crystal River, so we need to spread it out, two this year, two next year. The bus GPS, we still have that in there at five hundred thousand. And then the following year, in the seventeen year, I did add five hundred thousand for the bus radio upgrades. So let me explain that to you. With the county upgrading their radio system to the digital, we have to now update our radios that are in the buses. We did meet with Motorola to get an idea about that. Now, they can do some creative things for us, and we still might even negotiate some payment options or different types of options on how to pay them. But I plugged in, in totals, can be about five hundred thousand, so I just plugged that in next year, it's not something we got to do this year, we can wait. I think the eighteenth is the drop dead date that we have to do it, so I'd rather be hedged a little bit in next year's budget, so you can see how that will impact us.
I've got a question on the GPS program, and I know I'm on that safety and security committee, so I've been able to hear some discussion on that. One of the things I wanted to ask about was, you know, could there be an advantage for us to test that program before we commit all of the money? And I know with the bus lifts, for instance, you know, you're doing that out over two years. You know, would that be something that, has, has our board, we haven't voted yet to expend or approve a GPS program, correct?
No, I think we've just given direction.
Right, we just, we just give...
That's an interesting idea, though.
And you would go along that through the budget.
Yeah, that would be part of the budget commitment. But that's, so is there, is there an option? But that's, so, is there, is there an option to do that, that's?
Well, I mean, I'm just, I'm presenting that.
Okay, I didn't know if, that's, I didn't know if St. Doug maybe?
No, that, that was, I don't recall, we discussed, I know we discussed some different things, I mean, there is some potential benefits there, but one of the things that was brought up was new radios with GPS, as technology increases, you know, and that was something they were going to kind of look at.
We did talk to Motorola, and at this particular time, they do not incorporate GPS with their radio systems, so we did ask that, would we make like one expenditure to go to first one stomachs or anything, but they rarely admitted it, that is not in their technology, and that's not something they want to do, that's a different animal, you know, than one to radios.
But, you know, there, there's some, there's some benefits from GPS, bus GPS, there's also some things that you, you've got to look at as boards, and big decisions, like, you know, they can text people when the bus is getting close by, and who's going to be able to get that information, you know, all inconvenience for parents, you know, based on where the bus is, so there's some mechanisms out there that's really kind of neat things to have, but yet, on the other hand, we have to make sure there's safeguards in place for the other, you know, so that it can't be used to hurt the kids, so I, I'm just kind of curious about that, I just wanted to mention it, I mean, the board still hasn't made, we haven't made a decision, so it might be, it's okay, I guess, to have the full amount of money in there now, I mean, we could always decide something different, though, correct?
Yes, we're asking for the budget to be placed in there for that particular reason, if y'all choose or decide otherwise, we certainly will remove it or change it or as you wish, but before we would ever, even if you, when you approve it, before we purchase it, we would come back to have you approve the purchase again.
So you'll, you'll have some sort of a presentation over the bells and whistles of?
Oh, yeah, and for this type of a mouth, we wouldn't just rob you, based on your approval of the budget, we would come back?
We're going to get the presentation, the implementation plan.
No, you don't, you just approve it all.
And Ken, would there be an RFP for something of that nature, that would then specify, like, for example, Mr. Dodd's, you know, things of, you know, I'm not talking about necessarily that we're going to use or not use a feature, but maybe whether it has a feature or not have a feature, or those types of things.
Yes, and we look at it two different ways, we look at several piggybacks that are out there, and we look at doing an RFP, but we could always put in certain things, like, because I know one of the things that Ms. Farmer has discussed is about the student tracking piece, and just kind of looking, a forward look, if we buy something, we want to be able to buy something that has those capabilities, we may not be able to do it year one, two, or three, but we may be able to do it year four, five, but it has the capability, so we don't, we don't want to be short sighted.
And just for the public's understanding, we're not talking about tracking in the negative sense, we're talking about attendance, I think, just so, because tracking makes some of us nervous when we think of student tracking, so.
So that's, so we've certainly had those discussions as to making sure whatever we purchase, or propose to purchase, has those capabilities, and, and we spoke to Motorola about the radios, we're saying, can we do this, can we do it, like, that's just not our business, so.
You click the mic, it goes on.
Yeah.
Okay, and I have another question in reference to you. The technology piece here that we have, obviously, we're less money in 17, 18, and 19, and that is because we will have fulfilled the one-to-one, or can you just?
Well, two line items, the one-to-one is actually for the kids.
Oh, I see, I'm sorry.
Technology, the 2.8 million includes approximately 2 million for staff computers.
Oh, that's right, okay. That was the, yeah, that was what we discussed for our, our faculty, our teachers and staff.
Right.
Okay.
But Mr. Dodd, you're, I would think he's correct, though, if you were then to go out to say 2021, you might conceivably see that technology line item maybe go back up, because it's about time then to refresh?
Right, yes.
Or something of that nature, so you're?
At least on life cycle.
Right.
And the cost for the networking, I think we use, we use Bright House, correct, for our?
Bright House.
And where is, is that?
That's, that's in the general fund.
It's in the general fund, right, okay, I'm sorry, okay, yeah, the scaffold, okay, yeah.
So here, you can kind of see a breakdown of the one-to-one.
Okay.
And then also the other budget for the staff computers. So if you have to make the bond payment, that's a fixed, remember Christopher Primary School has been satisfied, this is all the high school now, come next year, well, we will have to start looking at doing by April next year, like a forward delivery agreement, where we have a guaranteed interest upon, because we'll, right now, we haven't paid interest, less the subsidy back from the IRS, which we just applied for our October payment, but come April, we'll have to start paying principal and interest, the principal doesn't go yet to the bondholder, just the interest at the end of the year 16, when they get the principal, but that principal payment can then be invested, so we can make a return on that money to help offset some of the costs as well. So we would enter into what we call like a forward delivery agreement, so we know for the next, you know, 11 years, or maybe 10 years, we know what set interest we're paying on that dollar, so we'll be looking at that next year. Property insurance has been pretty stable, we did see a slight reduction this past year, transportation, that's the cost of the buses, plenty of growth in these small property purchases, we may have more than one of the technology, we talked about the enterprise software, it's the software we're able to purchase out of capital, vocational equipment that's from Ms. Nobles and some things that she may need, furniture, it's always a constant 100,000 every year, I think, every year for the most part, that's what we're spending in new classroom furniture, food service equipment, phone fees, copiers, it's all pretty much, stays pretty relatively the same. And we go through, we have all the detail, you can see, like, here's the, the bond payment, so you can see it in there. Buses, what type of buses she has, and the age of replacing, Dr. Vettis' capital budget for computers, enterprise software. And it's pretty small, this is the copier, phone fees, that we regularly pay for the capital, which is a little, co-compliance, maintenance, we have a bunch of stuff that we, that's, that's, soup and nuts, the age of quality does, some can be paid for out of the capital, some, that's a big part of the general. We can make a transfer. Mr. Burkhart's capital budget for next year, and he's going to talk to you about some ideas about Full City, or maybe some updates. Just so you know, the, the roof of Citrus Springs Middle School has begun, that's good news, the air conditioner repairs are being done out there, air conditioner will be done at Crest, IMS, Elacanto High School, we're doing some remodeling at IPS, creating a new guided suite over there that they haven't had, Christopher High School, we're putting some additions there for the, lack of a better term, daycare program for the students over there. So we've been busy, we are busy.
Preschool, is it? I'm trying to hear the name now.
Is it?
Yeah. Little Pirates or something?
Yeah. They all come in with their little names. But the sewer treatment plant in Full City, I know the agreement, the easement, I think, was done by Mr. Bradshaw, I think Mr. Kennedy finally signed off on it, so that's all being done with Duke, so we get power on, we can crank her up, and the STP down there will be done, and then eventually it'll be handover to, to the county. IMS's kitchen remodel's going, Christopher Middle School, that's a remodeling, so we're staying busy this summer with all kinds of projects, so summertime is the busiest time for finance and maintenance and construction. And you can see Mr. Burkhart's out here, so his, his plan, and Citrus High is getting some roofing done as well, and it's on by, by Main Street. And then, I don't know, Miss Lee's step transfers in. Very similar to what you've seen, previously, we just made the updates, we'll go back and continue to make more updates based on the information we got today, and when we get the DOE says it's a second calculation. Any questions, comments, concerns?
I remember we were at the School Board Association meeting in 10, one of the very large districts came up, they were talking to all of us, we were just, and one person came up and answered, she said, okay, I want to know how you do it. How can you continue to be a school, and you're not in the hole, you're not in the red in the budget, how do you do this? And so I miss you, it's really focused on all of them, so I explained some, and then when it came to the budget point, I said, call Kenny Blocker, so your name is out there, and that happened with more than one large district, and I was hoping so much that Thomas was there, because a question also, I came up and they were telling me about the technology plan, and I didn't want to answer that, because they were, they were talking about the beginnings thereof, and I love more times, if they were here, they could just go launch it to a 15-minute discussion, so this happened several times, and I'm pretty proud of the fact that y'all do all these great things as well.
It was certainly y'all's, y'all's leadership, so we do appreciate that. Any other questions? Good question, that's too easy. Thank you.
It's still good morning, Mr. Allen, how are you doing, sir?
Pretty good, thanks.
Good.
Good, Mr. Kennedy. This is some of the school board members, like Mr. Blocker said, I'm here to give you some more information, based on the questions that were asked a month or so ago about Full City Elementary, and possibilities for getting back, to be getting to budget some of that money. So just give me a second. They've put together a brief presentation, of which, you can see, there's only three slides, the first is to give some background and review with you NGT recommendations, the last time they were in the district and updated the facility assessment study. Secondly, is to go over with you major maintenance work that's planned in the out years, we actually have information that goes six years out. And then the final slide presents ideas in a rough format of what some of the things that were talked about at Full City may cost, it is hard at this point to break some of those things out, so I've done the best that I can without actually going and doing work, but the idea is to, to see what might happen, should the board decide, to put back in the work plan, some or all of the work that initially was recommended by NGT. So the first slide repeats what was presented to the board in 2012, I've only repeated priority one, there were three priorities, priority one included Full City, Inverness Middle, and Inverness Primary. The blue is the Full City part, and of course, like we discussed before, they talked about eliminating the portables, increasing the number of students, and then addressing the core capacity areas, such as cafeteria, performing arts, media center, and administration. For that increase in students, from the roughly 500 student capacity that's there now, to roughly 600. Other than the change in enrollment, and what the state now allows us to build there, which is already approved in the plant survey, these recommendations would not change, we believe, should NGT come back, they would still say, continue with the plan, look at Full City, Inverness Primary, Inverness Middle, and then move to the priority two and three. Of, of course, that's up to you to decide. Just to give you an idea of what might be going on there in the future, there's projects that are outlined in the maintenance plans under re-roofing, fire alarms, intercom, kitchen, AC work at this point. Dollars are today's dollars, typically in the out years, we would, we've been including a compound of 2%, which you don't see here, and the last line item, which you also see on the next slide, is a contingency, which typically may include 10% at this point. Any questions or comments before we kind of get to this?
I want to ask one question on the intercom upgrade, having been at a place where the intercom was upgraded, it's a horrible, horrible thing that occurs, you can, now there's nothing. Do y'all check, do you go to school or check how it really works, how the intercom works, instead of just on paper?
Well, Maintenance has themselves, the last couple of years, been doing intercom upgrades to what they call a CareHawk system, which is more of an electronic system, and yes, I believe they, they do check, and, and the feedback has been that it's a, it's an excellent improvement.
Just that, because a, a new model, sometimes is not the way to go, so if it's checked, then that's not really a good question.
And the question I have, I don't want to answer it today, it's a research question, so I'm not expecting an answer today, but looking at it as a future budget item, with the current, current capacity structure of Full City at 500, with a long-range plan to reach a capacity growth of 600, if we could see a correlation between what the current board is to date, and the pattern of growth that's expected, and what that, that projected deadline would be to reach that 600 capacity, and I'll email this question to you, so please don't worry about taking notes, but when it does come up to be a line item that we will budget for and approve, that, that would be a question that I have, but then, don't take notes, I'll email the question to you, so.
I want, but I, I think in general terms, I can answer it right now.
Oh, great.
Their enrollment, the last time Mr. Dixon's department sent out the enrollment summaries was 333, like you said, their current fish capacity is 497, even though NGT recommended going up to 600, the education plant survey, DOE has capped us there, at least for the next five years, at not building beyond the 497, or, and this is where it gets a little complicated, we had to go back and forth with them over preserving the recommendation to replace the portables with concreteable permanent construction, as opposed to just having them go away and disappear, because we have so many vacant elementary student stations across the district. So the DOE capacity that they're holding us to is actually 468, it gets even more complicated, because the recommendation to reduce the portables is a decrease of 80 stations, the recommendation to build permanent construction back, which can be concreteable, it adds back 50, the compromise is that we're adding back more ESE-type spaces, so we're getting back actually more square footage, but 30 less student stations.
Interesting, thank you, thank you, I didn't expect you to?
Mr. Blocker, did you have something to add?
I was just going to talk about how the, the growth back in Full City may not be that great, but it may seem a lot different from the present.
Well, that's what I was going to say, too, because on a previous slide, there was, of course, the conversation when we get to IPS, that we have potentially need to reduce the number of stations there, and so that would need, since Pleasant Grove is at capacity, we would need to then, you know, have capacity in somewhere else, Full City being where we have the potential of having that. Now, the question I think becomes, is there a way then, because what NGT has taught us in the past is, you renovate before you relocate, and the idea, of course, that can, you know, it makes that process smoother. While they've capped us the state at, at the 497, if we were then to show? if we were then to show that, for example, IPS, we would be reducing stations, is there a way to negotiate, or if I recall in the past, you can reduce your stations one place, it doesn't mean that DOE will necessarily give you those stations elsewhere? Or am I incorrect in that?
Our experience in doing the last survey is that since we did have such a large excess capacity district-wide, that that became a very, very hard sell.
Even though we're not talking about moving, the kids aren't located in the same places. You know, like, for example, the surrounding area doesn't have capacity, other than at Floral City.
The typical answer out of the box would be, well, then you need to consider all the other alternatives, gate schools, different kinds of approaches, as long as you have those numbers district-wide.
One of their comments to me, I don't share it before when I ask about the populations, how much population, isn't, well, you know, near Don Allen, you have plenty of spaces, so the students over in Pleasant Grove can go there, I suppose. You know what size campus is, you have to be at your door, and start asking people like that. They would never do that, but that was their thought, their thought pattern was that, hey, Don Allen, Pleasant Grove, not a problem, both elementary area.
And they forget, our students don't come in 18, packages of 18 for third grade, 18 for second grade.
Miss Parrish, you're probably surprised, Pleasant Grove can dominate, no matter if we resell across the street. That's true, that's true there. That's a citrus sprain, she's like, oh yeah, we'll just set the over to clear.
Well, and then on one side, we try to be a very accommodating district when it comes to taking out of zones. IPS has a tremendous amount of out-of-zones. So do we then start saying we have to change our philosophy there, and say, well, we're going to reduce the number of out-of-zones? That creates a new challenge.
They make suggestions to the government.
They're great at telling us what to do.
Mr. Burke, you had mentioned concreables, but I know that there's also the opportunity, as far as cost goes, to have construction, right? Versus, I mean, which is, if I remember right, concreables and construction might be pretty equal, correct?
It's hard to tell at this point, but yes, last time we did concreables, the biggest advantage was of the time element, and knowing what we were getting. And it ended up being close to what we would have budgeted, at least, for new construction.
So the fact that we have many of those portables over 20, portables have been there more than 20 years at Floral City Elementary School, which we learned from the last meeting or the meeting before when we talked about this. You know, I would rather see new construction at that school in the planning process than concreables. That's just my personal opinion. But I think that if we were to get rid of the portables, and this is a question I had, if we were to remove all the portables at Floral City, that's going to reduce our fish capacity. Am I correct in that?
Correct, it will reduce the fish capacity, although we have approved an educational plant survey to add back 50 of those 80 student stations.
Okay, so you're...
That's why we're talking about replacement.
Right, so the MGT study, I mean, I don't really see the need to go back and do another study. And is that what you're also bringing to the board, that you think that that's what you said? I mean, you think that they would just say the same thing? So there's no need for us to spend money or to do any, and I agree with that, that we could go back in and study that and pay money for a study. So if we agree to that, then the next step is to look at what you have here now, the board has to decide if we want to put this back in the five-year plan, is that what I'm hearing? Okay.
Yes.
Keep in mind, just that, I just showed you the five-year plan, you saw the dollar, the work rate, the funding, the intercom, the fund losses, so just bring that to attention that it's here, we just don't, so this is what we're going to talk about.
And that, for sure, Mr. Blocker, the challenge, of course, we have to know is, it's not an issue that's going away.
Right, right.
And so at the same time, we have to have some plan, whether that's conceptually, then on to the budget, and then on to, you know, actual projections. Mr. Don, I'm in agreement with you, and this was a conversation we had had when we were a little closer to doing it. I think we had directed staff that we were interested in looking at traditional construction, and certainly looking at concreables, just to make sure we had a price comparison that was correct. But there didn't, it wasn't clear that there was an advantage of going with concreables over traditional, but to look at the package. I come back down, though, to the bottom sentence, and that is, whether it's the portables, the cafeteria, cafeteria, however the case may be, it goes back to what the master plan and what this board has planned for Floral City. And I think then that becomes still some of that conceptual, you know, question. If the state is going to cap us at 497, but we in turn say, we're potentially going to need another 100 more student stations there at some point, we may need to be a little more creative in the cafeteria design that accommodates those potential options of then building a cafeteria that would provide for that flexibility in the future. Would that be, Mr. Allen, correct, as far as that?
Well, yes, sir, you hit the nail right on the head. That last sentence is meant to say exactly what you just summarized. A campus master plan for face capacities of 468 or 497, whatever, that's the DOE number, and would also, you know, that master plan would also show how that could, when the enrollment was there, increase to be the 600 that MGT is talking about, would be part of any or all of these options you may select now. So if the decision was to replace the portables at some future date, as a part of that, we work with the architect to present to you a master plan that would show how the other areas could be improved.
I don't, and I'm not sure that I'm clear on the portable's status today. And I've been out there a couple of times this year, but at one time, they were being very aggressively used, and another time, it seemed like there were some storage in some, and some activity room in another. Is there, you know, I guess the question is, is two. One, if the portables were removed, would it impact the school's tremendous operations? And two, if they were removed, how long before we would need to put a permanent structure in place? Or would that need to be simultaneous in order to keep those negotiated stations? Because I guess what I'm thinking is, does a cafeteria become a more critical need for that school than, for example, portables, or the replacement of the portables? And I don't know the answer to that, that's really what I'm trying to do, to see if, as we put that budget forward, what becomes the most critical need? If stations of portables were not utilizing all of our capacity there, it would seem to think that, you know, we could work through not using portables. I know the reality is, and Mr. Heber would tell me, if we have a space, we're going to use the space. And board, you know, your thoughts, because I mean, that's going to be a part of this too, is what comes first?
I think, as a master plan was being developed, and then different options were identified, that that would come out, and be able to be agreed upon as to where the replacement, where the building or the concreables or whatever would go, in such a way that it's not going to impact the future growth. And once that happens, can the portables remain in use for some part of that time? Or do they need to go immediately, like the Crystal River project?
And is that conversation with board, school staff, who's been involved with the project?
Absolutely, right.
Are we leasing those portals? Okay, so if we could do the comparison, thanks, appreciate all your work.
And there's another, a relationship between, like, new dining, multi-purpose, and stage areas, and the size and the square footage to the population of the school. You don't have, it could only be 4,000 square feet if your school is this size. There's not a comparison, or is there? Or you're suggesting that either isn't, because you can use those areas as different uses? So there's not a relationship?
Yeah, there is.
There is?
Yeah, there is definitely, and these budget numbers were developed based on assumptions of, a very general look at the size of the space proportioned to the size of the school. Keeping in mind that these numbers are based on a 468 capacity, because that's all we're currently allowed to spend. However, you can see there's, you know, it's considerable expansion in that dining, multi-purpose area. Traditionally, these numbers represent what we would do if we were building a new school that size. And the new schools we have built in the last 15 years have been to the maximum of the facilities list. So they're larger than the school, than the older schools, which I'm sure you've noticed. And you see that particularly pop up here when you realize that the amount that's being spent to expand the cafeteria and adding a multi-purpose room. Typically, when we build a new school, cafeteria would include a multi-purpose room. The older schools like Floral City, the square footage is just based on so many square feet per student, without adding the multi-purpose.
So you can add two multi-purpose rooms, with the idea that one of them would be used as a classroom if it kept going.
So this plan that you have here is kind of the big picture for the master, for a master plan that we could put back into the five-year work plan, and then the board could decide, as staff recommends, and what the needs are, then we would be voting on what we would approve at that time. But...
And/or ones to take out of the plan.
And, right, okay. Well, I agree, I agree with this. I think it's time that we give Floral City attention, and I like what Mr. Kenny talks about. You know, we got to look at this, the rezoning, or the student, we have, we're at 100% capacity at Pleasant Grove. Inverness has a lot of issues, you know, there are some things that we're going to have to look at down the road. So I like to see this in the five-year plan, so we'll be ready to address those issues. And that, I like the concept that you brought up, that MGT has said you renovate before you relocate. I think that makes a lot of sense, and so I would be in favor of moving ahead with this. And we can't do it today in this workshop, but...
No, and I am too, I think the question's going to be is, you know, is the master plan a conceptual or a literal plan? And that's the part I'm not really sure that I understood. And I think, I guess the question is, are you talking, are we talking about being able to move to some plan, actual plan? Because right now, this is conceptual in that.
Correct. I believe what Mr. Blocker said is, if there's a place in one of the out-years to allocate some or all of this money, that then, when that came about, we would advertise hiring an architect, which is like the Crystal River projects, to look at, first to look at the entire campus, and then to do whatever piece or pieces, we're going to move ahead.
We've got the process in person, we do it 15 minutes before, so, yeah. Thank you very much, appreciate the conversation.
Did we get, I don't know that we get, Ms. Parrish, did you have anything else?
Oh, no, I agree with the plan for now.
That was what I was going to ask you, a direction that you needed from this board. And I would agree, and I would be very supportive of that, I would too.
I was just saying, what type of expenditure for a thousand?
I would suggest allocating a hundred thousand, knowing that that sounds high, however, we may get into other unrelated costs, like testing, surveying.
So I would suggest maybe do a plug-in, maybe a hundred grand into Allen's budget, for this capital budget for a master plan, to hire an actual architect, do a master plan. And then come back and say to the board, here, conceptually is how I think, and after talking to staff, and how I believe this could go, what the cost would be, and how can we fit it into it.
And for those that don't, and because it almost maybe sounds like we're pulling out a thin ear, this is a study that has been done and redone on this situation. We have just come out of now our, hopefully, our toughest budgeting years. It's time we get back to making appropriate decisions so that we aren't scrambling down the road, and that we are making the proper decisions. So I want the community to understand too, that this has been well-planned. I think what we're trying to do is continue that, so that we're making proper investments. And that's the other thing, we're investing on our east side. This is really the beginning of an east side transition that we need to do, that's going to affect IPS, Pleasant Grove, and ultimately, Inverness Middle School. So I think if, there's no objections from this board, or if this is the correction, I think the board is saying, yes, we'd like to add that into the budget and get us moving down this corrective route.
If it's appropriate, I could please add, when the architect team looks at that site, we've had some expenditures already in infrastructure, with plumbing and electricity to support those portables, understanding those portables will grow, if there's any way we can maximize what's already been invested with that infrastructure. It's just a consideration that I would like to throw out there, if it's at all possible. Thanks, thank you very much for having so much good information for us.
How much Thomas talked about the east side, if people were worried, always that.
No.
That's the west side, and that's the east side.
It's time for the east side.
It's time for the east side.
Very good, thank you for that direction. I may add one last comment, the question's asked, and that's asked of me, why did Governor veto our project, I think you did quote. The project was vetoed because school districts have the ability, through record-high state K-12 funding, to implement a program of desire. That was a quote we received from the board, is why he vetoed it.
Did you get a chance, did you say that to me?
Oh, no.
Thank you, Mr. Blocker, for that clarification. Did Mr. Clotter leave our, I thought for your sake, you were making a beeline, thinking, we're done? No, I'm sorry, sir. Pupil progression plan?
Yes, sir. Good morning, members of the school board.
You know what, we're going to, I apologize, we do this to you, Mr. Clotter, all the time. Let's reconvene at 11:45, and just take a quick break.